We have a clipboard being passed around, if you would please. It's just to let the board know with any clues here and also if a person requests any information from the board, we'll have your name and address if you wish to put it down. Thank you. This evening, we also have an agenda which we follow, which has been posted outside. And exactly this time, I'd like to reference a public hearing on special permit 286, 287, and 288, a site plan number 54, 56, and 57. And this is for ASD Coy Hill, Mass Solar LLC. The applicant who is present this evening has requested to construct and operate a 22.4 megawatt ground-mounted solar energy facility. The properties are located on Coy Hill, also known on the Sessors Map 1, Lot 14, and lots 131 and 132 inclusive, which is located in the rural district. One comment I'll make on behalf of myself, I am an abutter, although I am the furthest abutter to the far end, which I'll call the north end of Coy Hill and does not impact me in any ways after it was explained on the plans how it was being set up. I can still sit here on the board and have comment. My comments will be openly in questions to the project as it goes on, and I will be able to make a clear decision on one way or the other when it comes down to it. Okay? So at this time, I have two members of the ASD Association who've come up front here this evening. And this is an introduction, folks. There's been hearsay. What we'd like to do at our first meetings is present, have the presenter present this as an introduction tool. There are no decisions. Some people may have a few questions. But right now, the board has not had anything in depth presented by this company reference this facility or proposed facility on Coy Hill. We have abutters here and residents and some concerned citizens. That's great. Tonight, you're going to find out the whole facts. Then down the road, there'll be another meeting that we'll all come back and we'll slap the whole system as far as the permitting is concerned. Okay? So I'll let the presenters introduce themselves and travel on from there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sir, everyone, my name is Evan Turner. I'm with AMP Energy. That's what ASD stands for, is AMP Solar Development. The ASD Coy Hill, M.A., Solar LLC is a project company for the array specifically. You can find some information about AMP Energy at AMP.energy if you're looking around later tonight. If you go to AMPEnergy.com, you will learn a lot about an energy drink from Pepsi. So with me here tonight is John. John is from Dusette Engineering. They are the engineer for this project. The landowner, as you may have heard before, is Mr. Fred Spain, who lives just right here on Coy Hill. So what I'd like to do now, I'm going to walk around the array, starting at the bottom. We've got a south array, which is these two in blue together, and a north array, which is this one in blue up top. I'm going to start from the bottom, going to work our way in, kind of going counterclockwise, and then we'll come right back to the beginning here at the bottom of Coy Hill. So Mr. Spain's house, you guys are familiar with, is right here where my finger's at, right at the very bottom of his property that goes all the way up and off the map into this little subsection that starts here at Coy Hill and finishes here in Coy Hill. We will take his driveway, come by his house, and continue in along his property, turn a right turn, going back north. So here's his house, here's his barn area, this is that open field that's used for hay slash cows, and we'll come right along the edge of that on Mr. Spain's property, up into the first part of the south array. Gravel road will hang a little bit of a right, will still hug it inside Mr. Spain's property. We'll come by an inverter path where we have the electrical equipment that takes the arrays' electricity, turns it into AC power, which then goes back onto the grid. And from there, we will continue up. We will cross a small wetland that's 13 feet wide, and we will come to the north portion of the south array. Along this access road is underground electric runs, so we have everything buried about a foot beneath the road, and that will only pop up right here roughly at the street and a little bit in where we have to connect the existing utility poles up top. Otherwise, everything on this site is underground electric. The north array is not connected physically to the south array due to this wetland in the middle. So Mr. Spain, he doesn't have this property here. He's got 1, 2, 3, and 4. So we have a second access for the north array, still off of Coy Hill. So if you go about a mile up from this guy, you will hit the second log landing, if you're familiar there, and you're almost all the way to your house at that point. And we'll come in off the road, right where the landing is. We've got plenty of space here. Take a left turn, and we'll come to this one down from the top and into the array area here. Same inverter in the middle, two identical systems, more or less, from an electrical standpoint, still underground until we get right up to the road here. In the array, what we've done here, and I'll let John explain this in a little more depth, we've used check dams every 15 feet in elevation to keep the water from flowing downhill too fast, so it has time to soak into the ground. What's out there right now, if you remember, Mr. Spain did pretty much a 98% clearing of this property about four years ago, and ever since, it's grown back up. So it used to be forest, and now it's a bunch of four-foot-high slash that is just there. It's non-managed, it's got an occasional tree, but it's a bit brambly to walk through. So what we're going to do effectively in the blue areas is take it from that slash/forest emergent growth territory, and we'll take it down to a meadow, which will be clearing the undergrowth and reseeding back to grass. The slope is actually pretty gentle downhill at about 5% the whole way. You know, a couple spaces where it's a little bit steeper, and you'll see these contour lines, which are also the check dams conveniently, get a little tighter. But otherwise, it's a nice gradual downhill. The high point is over here at Coy Hill, and so everything is down from there. We don't see a significant way that anyone from the road, especially the neighbors here, here, and back here, will be able to see the array due to, one, the intermittent properties in between, and the elevation drop. You're looking at about 20 feet from road to here at minimum, it's actually much bigger on this property, from the road elevation down. What you don't see on this plan set here now is the array, but just think of it as what's inside the blue. That'll be 100 feet back from the property lines as per your bylaw for non-residential property abutment, and 150 for a property in residential use, by my understanding. As far as I can tell from looking at the property maps, the only residential property is here at Mr. Gerald Morn, I believe, you've got a house right here in this, I'm sorry, not Morn, just north of him there, this guy right here north of the field, who has a house here, and the property comes all the way to the array. So otherwise, you're looking at about 100-foot inset from all of these property lines. The array itself is ground-mounted, nothing crazy canopies, now no crazy agriculture plans, so similar to what you've seen elsewhere. There'll be a steel stake in the ground, whether it's pushed or screwed in, just nails or screws, no different, and then it will just sit in the field and it won't move. Possible that we use what's called a single-axis tracking technology, which just moves on one axis, follows the sun east and west over the sky. Traditional solar is east-west aligned, the single-axis tracking is north-south, but otherwise, it's functionally the same. Seven feet, maybe eight feet tall at most for any of that stuff out there. I believe that covers, oh, utility connections do have to be brought to the site that is still in process with the utility, and it's a long study process. It's not just going to happen next month or next week, or maybe not even next year. But we like to start early so we know what we're getting at hold of. I believe the utilities are probably going to come from the south. So you will see improved power lines, they'll replace poles, and they'll come all the way up the street, and we'll come all the way up to the top for the top one, and we'll come off the street here for the bottom. Possible that it comes from the north end of Coy Hill, but that is a much larger engagement that the utility has to run if they're going to bring something down those roads that are still on the map but aren't really roads for any functional use. I'm going to pause for John here to swap spots, and he can talk to you about the runoff and why we used this style. And then I guess I'll go back to the board for if you have any questions, or we can start with audience questions that tends to, you know, improve the range of topics we cover.
With that, with this, at this time, there are a couple questions. So I'd like to entertain the abutters or anybody with the questions. The board will hold theirs to last, so that they don't forget where we are and pass around. Okay? So those that have questions?
Yeah, you'd say that you're going to have 150-foot setback to the panels?
For most of these properties, and the board will have to check me on this, the only property in residential use with a house on it is this property right here to the southeast.
What law number is that?
135 is the property ID, but I don't have an address, I'm afraid.
The next one up from Fred's?
Yeah, there's the field, and there's the next.
I want to look out and see the panels.
I don't expect you will. That entire property, this entire property is forested here. This one was recently cleared, so it is slash, just like Fred's. But otherwise, if you're on the street, we don't see a way you're going to see it due to the elevation going down so dramatically over the distance. I mean, this is, what are we looking at? Finger to 100.
150 feet.
This is the better part of 700 feet to the road across that additional property. So where are you, where is your perspective, sir? Are you on Coy Hill?
Family is, yes.
Gotcha. So we don't expect...
Right above Fred.
Gotcha. So right here above Fred and these houses here. Now, this is the, that's the empty field that's currently hay slash used for pasture. So I don't think you'll be able to see it, sir. This entire property is, it's there, it's vacant, but it's not under my control, so I can't speak to you for it. But the buffer of 100 feet will be allowed to grow back up, just like it is now, it's not going to be touched.
Can we get some plantings in there, so we don't see them?
I think we can, yes, sir. So that, at that distance, we'll probably look at a staggered grow of evergreens. More, you know, in the summer, that'll keep growing up, but in the winter, it's kind of belting suspenders. And so along this line here, you'll be looking for evergreens. And then over here, I don't feel like you can see it. I'd like to get out in the field and later this winter, when everything's completely dead, and I'll see what I can get to the road. But this is probably our best vantage. And then right here, you can probably get a little bit of it from the road, just because this has been so cleared.
I'm concerned with that, I have close.
Aside from the visual aspect behind it, and it's not only that, it's the wind. Fred did have that cleared years ago, but like you said, it is four-foot growth right now, and the wind is being held back a little bit by that four-foot growth.
Gotcha.
So if we can get evergreens, some type of buffer, something to protect the wind barrier?
Because it's coming up the hill for you guys?
It's coming from every direction.
All right. So...
Not only that, I mean, you've spent a lot of money for a house up there for the view. You know, we don't want to see the panels.
Fair enough. So those trees, when you typically plant them, come in at three to four feet tall, and they'll grow a foot and a half or so a year. So the sooner if we, I mean, that's just, you can't, the bigger tree you plant, the more likely it is to die. So you have the, you have the trade-off between it grows quicker, I'm sorry, you start smaller and it stays, or you start bigger, there's a decent chance some of them die, and you have to start over. You obviously never get the right height you want. So that's...
With a question like that, excuse me, with a question like that, one of the pride projects we just had in town here, okay? The abutters and the engineers met and walked. And I made a statement with the board last May. We don't work for them, they work with us. And in that statement, the project that's going on on South Street, abutters and project people met and had a very pleasant understanding. They worked out their differences, okay? And with that, that's something we expect that can and should be done with a project engineer and the people prior to these things going on. So when the concern shown by the abutters and residents, we can note it, we can also say it's been worked out, and then in the decision process, we have an agreement and understandings that can be done. So that's a request from the board to both parties, if that can be taken place between now and when it starts going on. So when they can come back, you folks can come back, everybody has an agreement and/or kind of came to an understanding of that, okay? With those questions, David, David.
That works.
Okay? One more, I think that's it.
Yes, sir.
Brian, call.
Well, he answered, I was just wondering how tall the trees he could plant, you know?
Again, Brian, it's going to come down to what they propose and what the board wants to see too.
I mean, if you plant a tree three feet tall, you'd be dead before it hits, you know, 50 feet, or whatever.
It's becoming a big issue, Brian, and Thursday night, for those of you that are here, and I'll let Evan keep going and John, Thursday night, there's a meeting downstairs here with the moratorium committee or the planning board moratorium committee, a group of residents, concerned citizens, and conservation members. I've got to be meeting downstairs, an open meeting, for everybody and anybody in town and the abutters to bring up these proposed questions, concerns, and what's going on. We'll learn from that, the board will learn from that, and then it'll move on between the January town meeting and the May town meeting. So that's an open invitation. And Brian, as I stated a minute ago, that question's been brought up a lot. There's simply an abovity, and the town's already, at least I have, my opinion, and I think the board is looking, abovities just ain't going to fly no more, okay? I mean, we're looking at deciduous stuff being put back in, and trees that are going to be there and start to grow and be able to mask a lot of this on the concerns of the people. So that answers that, Brian, if it does for you. One more? Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I mean, you need, you'd need a big machine to go spade up to, I got 10 acres of Christmas trees on my property, okay? And they can be transplanted? You know, you can take a 30 of them, transplant them, end of story, but it's expensive. I mean, you're going to have the right machine.
Yet if they want to work with us, Brian, and they, you know, things will, maybe they'll only ask.
I'm just saying that, you know...
Yep.
We're happy to hear all of that, because that sounds like a wonderful solution that is easier than me buying eight-foot, nine-foot trees.
Right.
You know, from, through my construction group who does all the, I mean, you get what you pay for, and you get the expertise for construction group doing landscaping.
If the objective is to hide something, you know, you don't want to wait 10, 20 years.
Oh, absolutely. We're in a favorable spot here, and this relative to the neighbors, all of this is fully wooded on the town farm side. This is all downhill. So if we were reversed and we're going uphill, it'd be very difficult to screen it off because it would keep rising above whatever you planted. But since it goes downhill, once you get it above the height of the array, you're going to have a pretty easy time not looking right at it, because it's going to fall away behind whatever you use for screening.
Unless you have a two-story house.
That's the challenge of, you know, what we've got in the way. So we have to get even taller to help you out there. So that's one reason we liked this site from an earlier perspective, because it was set back from the road a pretty long ways. You know, we didn't pursue anything like, you know, this is functionally the same kind of land, but more houses around it, more people, and a lot more work to do to make it appropriate for the neighborhood. So in this case, you, I believe this is all forested, the edge of that is pretty tree. But to the chair's point, we're happy to get out there with you guys. Obviously, I've got to talk to Fred to bring people on his property and start walking around and talking about using his land in a way that works for neighbors, which is an odd but workable conversation. And unless, we just need to go to each of the vantage points and sit there, you know, in the dead of winter, when you're going to see the most, and see what we can see. And then we will figure out a way to not see it.
Yeah, go ahead.
How many acres is that?
So all of Mr. Spain's land is a little north of 100, and I believe this is currently about 50 of that, once you take out the wetlands and the areas we're not using.
And how many panels?
Ooh, let's see. Panels is a tough way to describe it, because the panels efficiencies change, so as they get better, we use less. But roughly, if we use a 400-watt panel, let's see, 4,000 is 10, 40,000 is 100, 400,000 is 1,000, so 2,500 per megawatt times 22, so 45,000. They don't get more efficient. It's a lot, it's a big project, it is. It's a good piece of land for that, because it, you know, for all that land, you don't terribly have, maybe on us, 115 acres, and we've got 20 people here, is a relatively good draw, so far as who can see and where it fits. So when we look at a site, that's one of the things we do consider, is how well, and then since there aren't as many of you, we could certainly go to more significant lengths to screen you from it and more or less not change your lives one bit or to the minimum possible. So I believe we have, you know, this is one of my neighbors here, is anyone in this house here on the small postage stamp lot, next to where Fred's neighbor also cleared with him? Do we know who lives there? I've never met them, and it is awkward to go knock on doors after dark.
I don't know if I do that.
Exactly. Just fall into the house, you know, bug people, that's weird.
It's a long way from the center of town. You won't miss.
So things like that, you know, the finding neighbors, because this person in theory has, you know, a lot of the view, this is more grown in to help you guys out here as are the back ends of these lots. But we certainly can supplement them on the backside here, and this is all pretty much forest, this is all forested as well.
Good. Any other questions for the project director, Evan? John, I guess you got the floor next?
Yeah, if you want to talk about drainage and that stuff.
Yeah, sure. If you look at what we did here, my name's John Broder, I'm with Dusette Associates. We are the civil designers at the site. What we did here was we tried to mimic what exists out there today. A lot of times, you see civil projects, and we channelize flow, and we put it into ponds, and then we put point source discharges. What we tried to do here was essentially mimic what's out there today by creating rock check dams, some of them are upwards of over 1,000 feet long. So each one of these slows the water down, impounds it a little bit, slows it, allows anything to settle out, and then it slowly filters through the rock and goes down, hits the next one, does the same thing. By doing this, we've been able to mitigate any flow, so pre and post flows, there's been a decrease in post flow. So essentially, we're making the project down gradient slightly better than exists today. We're going to be doing that by, you know, changing this over to meadow and also by doing these check dams, which if you, it's kind of a larger version of, if you see a large construction site where they're taking flow and bringing it to ponds, they create these check dams and they hook it in order to allow the sediment to settle out over a longer run. That's, that's what we're doing here. I mean, and it's, it's a pretty, pretty simple, but we feel effective method.
We also like that it's a little bit lighter of a touch so far as civil work. It is a bit awkward and frustrating to go big dig pits in the back of the woods at the bottom of a hill, which is typically next to someone's property. In this case, we happen to be next to relatively vacant lots on the west side, which are wooded, but the principle still stands. We'd like to do less if we can. This site is about a 5-degree slope, it's pretty gentle when you're out there, so the check dam solution is sufficient. You just need enough of them to be thorough about it. And in that case, it's a couple, you know, we more or less drop a pile of rock across the entire elevation line, so nothing pools, because we don't want to channel it, you know, down the hill in a direction. And we just slow it down to where it acts just like it does today without the slash.
Which also, I mean, having these be a permanent structure while this vegetation is getting established, I mean, if you were to clear all this and you shake the land to go to these temporary sediment ponds, which you'd normally see, that will still have to happen, but this is a long-term solution, we feel, to minimize channelized flow, minimize point source discharges, which a lot of people don't like. And that...
The arrays go right over them, so far as what we install. You know, the arrays are steel posts into the ground. If it just so happens to be right on top of one of those piles of rock, move the pile of rock aside, install it, move the pile of rock back. And then it still has the same runoff style as it does before, and the array just sits over it the whole time.
Questions to John, folks, for Evan at this time? Keep their minds going, they can save.
I don't want to be a pain, but...
Of course.
Are you going to, like, maintain them, clean the vegetation out?
So over time, I mean, like, especially during construction, yeah, it's cleaning because it's like a tiny little sedimentation trap. Over time, you'd expect them to grow over a little bit as they just become a hump in the field.
It would be part of, anything, as long as they're operating correctly, I mean, a long-term maintenance, you guys have a long term, you guys are...
Yeah, we have, we have implants, we have to cut, we have to, we don't use chemicals anywhere, you just cut the grass. You bring these things, you know, two and a half feet above height, and then you just mow underneath them in between the rows.
I've had experience with the river rap dams, as you're talking about, and when they get blocked, they fail, you know, that's why I asked.
And it just goes right over.
Yeah, I mean, if, again, they're typically very small, so they plug up really fast, you know what I mean? This being as long as they are, if you see, if they're out there and they see channelized flow, then obviously that becomes, because it's cheating around to one side, so velocities are going to get up, could cause erosion. That would be part of a long-term maintenance plan to make sure that they're operating the way that they're designed to operate.
That's just a question I had.
No, Tim, these are civil jobs, like, that's the big, and then it's hopefully boring on the back end, but you can install it right, and you construct it right. That's the big issue on slopes, is catching the stabilization early, so you don't end up with a problem during construction after a fall like we've had this year.
Yeah.
Brian, you had, how big is that whole area?
This is a little north of 100, including this parcel here, which, you know, so maybe...
So you guys are going to put solar panels on 100 acres?
It's about 50 of it.
Oh, 50. Brian, that's, that's only a half, that's not even half the project.
That, that's a big impact on the wildlife and everything else.
It's still, it's, yeah, they all are, right. That is, it is, and those are things that we have to look at, okay?
I'm not, I'm not trying to, you know, I'm just, I'm just saying, let's be real, you know, next month, it's going to be something different, you know what I'm saying?
Familiar, familiar question. It is an unfortunate necessity that we have to cut the trees down, or in this case, it's not so much the trees, those have been gone, but the emergent growth slash whatever you want to call it.
I mean, you know, I've been in this town 30 years, okay? And if I, as a taxpayer, ain't getting something out of that, I could care less about it.
So...
I'm just being honest.
There will be tax revenue to the town, but, you know, otherwise...
I'm sorry, go ahead. Everybody who is now involved in solar within the town, their taxes have been paid in the rears approximately 10 to 15 years, has been over, I believe the number was, correct me the board if there was, if I'm wrong, over $200 and something thousand dollars just paid in the last six months of taxes in the rears, which also leads to...
Where'd all the money go?
Brian, you go ask the people who collect it, not me.
Yes, that's a terrifying question.
And Brian, with that, with that, Brian, and folks, the taxes are being paid for the life of this solar project and these solar projects. So every year, the leasie pays the taxes for the properties that hasn't been paid and will continually be paid for the life of the project. That's the way it works in answer to that, Brian, and in answer to some of the questions asked.
Are we not, are we not trying to limit these things in town?
Brian, I gave you that comment a couple moments ago. The committee is formed, and they have been working over the past month now...
Right.
...for a moratorium on solar.
Okay.
And that's going to be spoken about Thursday night, Brian, downstairs. It's also going to be spoken and brought up as an article for the January 17th town meeting, okay? So that is...
Yeah, I mean, I just...
No, 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 just it.
I think, I think this...
But going back to the comments, they are large projects, and those that are new to the meetings and what's been going on, the state and the federal government, we cannot deny them. We can, we can work with them, or they can work with us, excuse me, and we can come up with a, with a formula, with a, with a committee that, and the bylaws that the town has now. And we now, thanks to all of you that were at the town meeting in May, we have a special permit, a site plan and a special permit that we didn't have before, that you all voted on, or many people voted on, the majority voted on in May. So you can't say no at all. You can, they can work with us, we can restrict them, we can work, work it out, so that setbacks and everything else, and invasion by seeing site and working with them, how they can be set up. We have an engineering company that represents the town who will review this, the peer review. When it's presented at the next meeting, they'll get a copy of it, they'll start working on it, and then they become questions and answers to get them to all work out, okay? I know, they don't see it from their houses, and the town gets nothing out of it. The only thing the town gets something out of is the town landfill one. Other than that, we get nothing.
You get tax payments.
Yeah. Um, yeah, I'm sorry, we get the tax money.
If you don't want anything, we are happy to do that.
Turn right around and face that everybody. No, we get tax money.
You get a hundred acres of junk in the middle of wilderness is what we get.
Yeah, if it's a person, and it's not insignificant for a project this size.
No.
I mean, it's not relative to the special permit, which is not about.
I mean, you've got, seriously, you've got all kinds of wildlife, owls, all kinds of wildlife.
So it's, in that case, I mean, it goes to being a different kind of habitat. It won't be terribly dissimilar to the cow pastures on the east side, except there's just a bunch of solar arrays in there, which most of the animals don't terribly care about. Deer will have no trouble with a six-foot fence. Smaller wildlife will go under, we give a six-inch gap underneath the bottom. But no, it's not the same.
All the trees you cut down when all the animals die and everything, that just, that doesn't happen.
Landowner has the right to cut the trees down. Fred cut them down well before I arrived on scene. We, we work with what we inherit. And that's one of the reasons we looked at the site, because the trees were already gone.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, it's a little better than cutting down trees that were untouched. But again, landowner's purview, the, the solar permit is for the array and for, it's not for cutting the trees down. It's just that's a process by which we would have to install them.
All right, with, with this, again, this is just the introduction of what's going to go on, leading into it. The next meetings that we have, the formal, the plans will be presented out, more engineering talking, more conservation decisions, which they're working with them now. And then the board will have a whole bunch of questions. With it right now, does the board have any questions about the introduction given tonight? Anybody, please? Okay.
I noticed that he said that the views won't be a problem from the abutters. Looking that way because the site was like this, right? So they saw our arrangement like that.
Downhill, yes, sir.
Okay, but what happens to the other people that are on this side that are going to open the window and look at all this?
On the town farm road, on the town this side?
Yeah.
So, I mean, these trees.
Their houses are going to go down in value, right?
Uh, they won't be able to see it. And there's no, these are five and eight hundred feet deep. They are currently fully treed. I mean, I don't control the property, so I can't promise you they'll always be treed. But those trees are probably sixty to eighty feet high.
So you're stating that if I drive by on that road, I will never see this?
I don't believe so, no. Again, that assumes that these guys don't clear cut their land, I've got to give you that.
No assuming.
Fair enough, there's no way I can promise you that they won't clear cut their land. I think it is very unlikely, given these wetlands, that they could, because they likely continue down the hill and are protected. But from that distance, you don't see over the trees at ground or multiple story level, the trees are just too tall. And the uphill is just too far.
Okay, so now that you mentioned cut trees, it's really bad that the owner already cut it, all the trees. Because now you guys, even if you see it as an advantage for the, for this project, to me it's a downside. Because if you make all the calculations with that full of trees, the water runoff will be so much different of what you're proposing.
So, I have to say, I can't tell you it's better or worse with or without trees, that's the owner's property decision. Now, I can't tell you from a screening standpoint, if there were no trees on Coy Hill and it's just one big cow pasture, no trees anywhere. And I put this in the middle, it would be out there in his birthday suit.
Excuse me, David and Mike, if you could take it to the hallway, please?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's all.
Yeah, okay.
And we continue talking.
Yes, sir. If this whole thing was no trees anywhere, just because every landowner wanted to have a pasture, this, they're able to be out there in his birthday suit. And you're right, you'd probably be able to see it from town farm road. And there's no way I could fully screen it. I could do a lot of work, but you just, I mean, it's the middle of a field, that's what fields are.
I wasn't asking you to screen it.
So, that's saying like that's, you know, we say that the trees are better or worse. When I try to go put things in fields, every neighbor in the world says, go put it in the forest somewhere. The trees aren't that big a deal, we don't want to see it. And when I put things in a forest, people tend to think, well, why don't you use a field that already exists? That, the back and forth, just depends which, where I start with. I tend to find that forested projects are more accepted by communities because they're naturally screened. And they don't get anywhere near the same visibility after you're done. With that said about the runoff, they model this as the current field, not as forest. That's correct, right? So it's that slashy, weird four-foot stuff. And that's why we have so many check dams, which is otherwise very gently slug land. Just because, yeah, it'll get a little, as I'm stealing the engineer's words from all these meetings, the coefficient goes up for runoff, so it gets more runoff here. But, so that's why we add more stuff to slow the water down so it can drain back in.
See, the problem is not the slowing down the water, is that the ground is not going to absorb the water as it did before.
So there's, yeah, there isn't the vegetation, but that's why you use the check dams to impound it, it has longer to soak in.
I, I saw the details over here and is this any, has been this done before?
We've got a couple other projects, we've done this on, the other engineers, you know, they get the third-party review? They both look at the stormwater.
Reviews, I want to see the real facts, because I believe, I believe that the ground without vegetation, forest is not going to absorb the water as the same as these plastic panels.
Okay, I guess we'd have to refer to as a third-party engineering, because they'll look at the stormwater reports. We cannot improve or decrease the runoff quantity. The flow's got to stay the same, we can't starve it because it feels more conservative. They have a responsibility to keep it more or less the same.
We try to balance it, I mean, there is a decrease based on our calculations, there is a decrease.
But your calculations are based now that there are no trees and so that's.
Less what we start with.
Right now, I noticed water damage after they cut the trees two or three years ago. So there's already damage. Now I'm going to put the solar panels and instead of fixing it, we're just going to keep the damage forever.
I can't be responsible for what the landowner's done within their rights to cut the trees down before we're there.
That's the job.
Like, I understand the, so like you've, you've cut the trees down and forester gets a huge leeway in what they're allowed to do by right. It's a, thank God, I wish I had that leeway.
I'm just trying to make it fact that, you know, the site will never be like it was before and with the panels, it's not going to get better, right?
I can't say right to that because you said will not get better, and I just can't stand up here and say that. But I understand your perspective that it's, it's going to go to be a field. It's not going to go back to big forest, it's going to have twenty-plus years of field.
I don't even see any retaining pond.
You don't have any, that's the lighter touch.
Yeah, that's.
That's the point of having all of those to put high check dams.
Each one of these long cha, or riprap check dams impound, so you have, instead of having, instead of me putting a small pond right here, which you'd look at and go, well, there's a pond there and that's great.
No, it's not great.
Oh. This is essentially a bunch of small, it essentially slows the water down, impounds it behind it.
On your detail, you have two-inch rock, two feet high, every, about every ten.
Ten or fifteen feet in elevation.
Okay.
Correct.
So if there are projects like this that are already working, I would like to see them.
We have other projects in development, I don't think we have any that have used the check dams on this scale.
Okay. But we use check dams, you know, when we develop stormwater pollution prevention plans for large construction, I went in and I cleared fifty acres on Walmart.
But you realize that Walmart has a big parking lot where there's all.
No, no, I'm talking during construction, not that. We don't use the check, we use the check dams during construction before all of that is online. We utilize those check dams within swales to slow the water down before it gets to ponds.
That's the point, slow the water down, we don't want the water.
Well, I can't, yeah, there's, there's no way to get rid of the water.
There was, there used to be woods?
Yeah.
It still doesn't get rid of the water, the water still falls and we still have it.
Not at the same pace.
Yeah, but I mean, there's nothing I can do about that, we inherit the site we've got.
I just wanted to create the fact, so everybody is aware of that.
Well, and that's similar to how we get wetlands here now, if you look at G I S maps from, you know, which are larger state, more automated, like radar establishments, there are no wetlands on these parcels. It is not unusual to find after you do a lot of cutting, that wetland patterns change, not only due to rutting, but also due to less vegetation.
I bet all of those wetlands increased because of the cutting of the trees.
No, it, it changes, that's why wetlands are only good for three years, the delineations, because they need you to go back and confirm. With that said, we, we have to start where the property is now. We have to make it relatively neutral, we've got a little bit of a decrease. I'm not allowed to starve it out to fix it. I mean, if we could, we have a lot of options for that, but we just can't, so.
They're still in conservation's hands. And these questions, I'm sure, based on the check dams and flowage and stuff, is something that conservation will be discussing with them in the next couple of days. And then with Graves, we have that, which we will use also with our engineering firm to discuss. So that's, that's a hot topic and then the other one question, now Brian, you have.
Yeah, I'm asking myself, you know, what's underground three feet, five feet? Like, if you're on a mountain and there's ledge two feet down, okay, and you strip the trees, like the architect just said, that water's not going to go anywhere, it's just going to be a mess. So my question is, what's underground, you know, in, on that area, nobody knows?
Well, you have U S P S soil mapping. Basically, what ends up happening is it's all mapped out, the whole area is mapped out.
Okay, so what's, what's, what's under there?
The answer is, we haven't done a ground penetrating radar or six-hundred test pits. And we just can't do that kind of work to dig every, you know, hundred feet to figure out.
I'm just saying logically, if you're on a mountain, it's probably ledge.
But I, I reckon.
The standard of practice is you utilize, there's, there's A soils, B soils, C soils and D soils. You utilize, if you enter it into your model, say, say this is A soils, A soils are.
Is anybody going to dig down and find that out?
We don't need to, we utilize U S P S soil mapping, that's the industry standard on which you use.
John, that's true, for the permit set, afterwards, we get permitted, we get everything lined up, and if we're going to build this thing, the incentive program is acquired, all that jazz. We will go out with backups and do test pits around the property for two reasons. One, it helps inform our soils. And two, it helps inform what kind of racking we use in the ground, because you say if there's ledge two feet deep, and I will install a post three feet tall, I need to install something different, because I can't get down there. You will have dozens across this site north to south. But from a drainage perspective, we use the soils map because it works out perfectly well on average for the whole site.
Okay, well, can you take that soils map and give something to us so we can see?
I mean, we can give the description of what each soil category is.
Just that area there, you know, explanations.
We can get you a soils map as well, and a big one, when we come in next time for where the soils are.
Brian, we'll note that and make sure you're here and.
I just think it's important to note, you know.
Good question, they're going to answer it for you, so be here and get a copy of that.
Yeah.
We'll have them explain it. Those are questions that are going to be answered, okay?
Is anyone here from?
Very good.
Sorry, sir. Is anyone here from the town farm side at the bottom of the hill? Anybody? All right then.
So, just so you know, this is, this is what a soils map would look like. You can see within the area, there's every different soil type.
Okay, so those, that particular area, do you know? So when did they do these things, these tests? The state did them like, what, a hundred years ago or something?
So, yeah, well, they did them, I believe in the seventies.
Uh, seventies?
The soils don't change, I mean, unless you're.
So they got that whole area covered?
They got the whole state, they got the whole country, you know, that you.
Really, okay, so, all right, yeah, if you could just, you know.
Yeah, so essentially, essentially that's what you would see, is, is a map like this and you can look, it's, you know, it gives the soil type within those areas. We overlay this onto this.
Right, if you could.
And then we, and then we calculate every type of soil, how much area of that type of soil, and that impacts the runoff calculations directly.
I think that would help the board figure out.
And everybody, but answer questions in people's minds and we'll get it done. It's not a day for it.
But it's two different things, it's soil types is one, but he's also right, vegetated cover is another, so when you look, you select.
Especially if there's ledge two feet down and you strip the vegetative cover, the water's just going to shoot.
Yeah, well, you.
And we've had a lot of waterway.
Oh, yeah, you're speaking to stripping.
We wouldn't be stripping.
Yeah, yeah, so we have to clear the land, so naturally you're going to lose an inch or three of topsoil as you do that. You'll stockpile it on site, so, you know, separating out the vegetation. We don't otherwise grade the site down, we work the existing contour. So after we've gotten the site down to more or less dirt, because you're going to have to get pretty close on this guy, we will then immediately reseed and then we'll redistribute the soil. And then we work on top of that existing grade.
So in between the solar panels, you do that?
Uh, so we do that before the panels even go down.
What's in between the solar panels, stone?
Same, same grass.
Same grass.
So everything gets down to, just like the cow pastures across the street, a little less elevation and slope. It's just grass the whole way, plus the check dams.
That's what's kind of unique about these versus most large-scale construction projects, is normally you'd see bulldozers going in and reshaping the land and moving stuff around.
No, I think it's smart to just use what's there, keep it the way it is, as a first rule.
And I can tell you, like, our solution if Graves thought we didn't have quite enough, we'll add more check dams. Like, I'm not a big fan of digging pits in the back of the woods downhill next to people's properties, if of course Graves concurs that that's a reasonable fix or improvement. You know, with that caveat that I can't speak for them, we very much like the lighter touch work. So, and we had that conversation with the Concom. But of course, their jurisdiction stops at the orange line, which is, we're going to stay a hundred feet away from the, out of the wetlands, out of their jurisdiction, the buffer zone, with the exception of this crossing, because otherwise this area is islanded for my property rights. So, with Mr. Spain. So, that's the only time we're crossing the wetlands and it's thirteen feet. It'll be a, probably a gravel and culvert option, but we're looking at something a little lighter touch if we can find an economic way to span that with something that'll last twenty years.
How do you keep the grass down? Use chemicals?
No, I mean, the panels come three feet, panels come three feet tall. Uh, to the bottom edge.
Right.
And that's mostly for snow, because at some point in the next two decades, we're going to give a three-foot snowstorm. So you need room for the snow to come off the panels to some degree. Maybe not all the way in a three-foot storm, that's pretty impressive. But, then we just mow.
Okay, so you mow, you mow the grass?
Yeah, so we mow, like, we pick grass that doesn't grow four feet high.
Okay.
So you don't have to mow very often. Ideally, we get out there, like, all year this stuff will be two feet tall perfectly, and it'd just be a big field. Although we tend to find that animals will eat it before it gets that tall.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, just one question, you guys are in Concom now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and you had mentioned before the meeting that there's going to be some plan changes. So when you meet with us next, you're going to submit the plans that you're going to use.
Yes, sir.
In the project.
We wanted to catch all the introduction meetings and one-plan revision.
I'm, I'm good with that, it's just some of the problems that we've had with some of the other developers is, you know, we get one or two meetings into this and then there's a plan change and there's a plan change and, you know, for me, that's just, doesn't make any sense. Get all your i's dotted, your t's crossed and come to us once. It makes it a lot more streamlined, a lot easier and a lot more pleasant all the way around, because now we're not talking about Plan B when really we're talking about Plan C.
Revision seven.
Right.
So we just.
And also, if you could include when you bring your plans.
Eleven by seventeens.
For all of the board members, so that we can follow along and that can be phasing out of audience.
And we'll bring them for the audience as well, it's happy to do it. So I can tell you, we use the same design style and that process in Brookfield very recently, with Ms. Mahoney and their planning board. And I was very happy that the only thing, we changed that plan set from start to finish. We made a driveway, the existing shape, instead of making it straight, because it was easier, and we added trees. And that was the only, and that's, the abutters prefer the trees, that was the only change to the plan sets. When we come back to you next time, our goal is to have exactly what we'd love for you to build, unless you have any adaptations that we need to conform to.
Last question for John, could you spell your last name, sir, please?
First name's J O N, just so you know. No H.
Could you spell your first name?
Last name is B R O D E U R.
Some sections would inherit either of them.
What was it?
Some sections of the site.
Oh, so then dig or blow ups for the, yeah, especially the eleven by seventeens.
You know, sections are always.
Yeah, like on the big plan sets, you know, it's easy to see when you scale it down to eleven by seventeen, it helps to zoom in.
Yeah.
You'll get at least one of those for the crossing and we can give you some larger sections there as well.
Thank you, Mr. Jerry.
Anything else?
Wait, just one question, I'd asked the other solar farm company from the other meeting, if they were using batteries? Are you guys using batteries at all?
Sure are.
You are, okay.
Yep.
Do you know approximately, like, approximate quantity?
Ooh, let's see, we built eleven.
Just a rough idea.
Yeah, if we built eleven point two on each, you're probably looking at two or three shipping containers worth of battery equipment. Current battery densities and whatnot. So think of that as a twenty by forty shipping container, it's all self-sealed. Like, it's got fire, it's got fire, it's got automatic shutdowns, it's got telecommunications. And about half of that, any volume is, you know, the battery and stuff and half is all the rest.
Right, yeah, okay.
And that's, again, that's, the bigger you get towards eleven and twelve megawatts per the array, with the fixed connection size that we have in the solar program, the more batteries you need. Because you can't send as much through the connection at any given time. So if we made, if this ends up being nine megawatts per project, possible, that's a factor of how much it costs to build, how expensive the batteries are and the price we get for the power when we get there, well, then it might only be two, maybe. Well, then it might only be two, maybe, to one and a half containers, and then batteries are getting dramatically better as well. So I can tell you that the interconnection with this project probably wouldn't be built for three years, I mean, that's a realistic number, uh, so it's not, it's not gonna happen that quick.
Yeah.
So when I say, you know, number of panels or size of batteries, we've got two years for the market to evolve before we know exactly what we're putting, you know, on the pads.
And, and is there a set of batteries for each of those three, or, or is it, or are the three connected together?
Two, yeah, these two are together.
Okay, so we have a set of batteries for those and a set of batteries for the other ones?
So that pad is right down here.
Okay.
Um, and then that one's right up here.
Oh, that makes, makes sense, yeah, now I understand, all right, thank you very much, appreciate it.
You said you did a job in Brookfield?
Yes, ma'am.
Was that the transfer station?
No, no, that is four fifty-two Cronin Road. I also happen to be the landowner for that property, so I wear all the hats.
Okay, anything else, folks, with that answer? Folks, this is the way it's done, for those of you that are here for the first time, okay? Then we'll be coming back, once they're clear with, uh, conservation, and everything's drawn up to satisfaction. They'll get in touch with us, make sure everything's squared away, Mrs. Elbow will give them a date, and we'll start the second process of the permitting, okay? Your concerns, your questions are what we want every time we come in, all right, and we'll get them answered, or they will get answers for you. Abutters' concerns, you can meet with them in the hallway afterwards, they've already, earlier this evening, they committed to, uh, working with the Johnsons up in the hill, are speaking with them. Uh, that's the way we like it, the board with the introduction sees what's going on, now, we'll just take everything this evening, take a look at the plans, and at the next meeting, we'll have our questions in depth, our next meeting, Graves Engineering, who represents the town on your behalf, and the board. Uh, will vider with these fellows here, based on depth, height, weight, distance, whatever the heck they, two engineers will talk about, they'll come up with agreements, they'll present it here on the floor so everybody can hear, and there'll be input by you people. The projects will be going on, uh, as they come in, we have a few more new ones coming in, and we have three we've already started. This one that comes back will be number four, I believe, and with that, everybody's invited back on the floor, and please, if you wish, on Thursday night, show up downstairs, Kathy, seven?
Seven.
Seven o'clock downstairs, listen to the people that are on the committee, answers will be given to questions, questions you have, so that they can work on to get things together before the January seventeenth special town meeting, okay? All right, thank you, Evan, thank you, John, go ahead.
I have one question for the board about the interpretation of the bylaws, it has a hundred or a hundred and fifty-foot setback, is that to the array or to the fence line?
Fence line.
Okay, it just makes a difference now, we'll space everything out just to sort of know there.
All right, thank you, folks.
For you guys who wanna meet, we're gonna step out in the hall, and also, I guess, my plan at the moment is probably to send everyone on the street a letter with a time and an email, and we can figure out a time to do a site walk or two for your band.
All right, moving on, thank you, folks, payroll for Captain Zob, please.
I made the motion with Kate, Kathy, okay.
Motion made, before Ezra, second, second by Bob Stevens, Owen Taylor.